This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM of the Southampton School Committee. Four out of five members present. Dylan Maudsley will be chairing the meeting tonight. Chair John Lombard is not present. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 10, 2024.
All right, so item D under reports. I just want to fix the spelling. Glenda's last name is Cresto, C-R-E-S-T-O.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended, second.
There's a motion to approve the minutes as amended made by Julianne, seconded by Kim. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Public comment? Once, gone twice. Sold. Circulation and warrants, you should have gotten those online. I believe those are all set. Announcements and correspondence, I have none. Bridgeables report?
This week is Teacher Appreciation Week at Norris. It's also School Nurses Day today. We celebrate all the staff this week for the wonderful work they do on a daily basis for our students. Thank you so much. May 10th is a half day for professional development. All staff will be in training with the Southampton Police Department at Norris, learning about updates to safety and security protocols. MCAS math is wrapping up and grades five and six will finish this week. Next week, grade five will complete the science and technology test. Field trips and special events coming up. Grade one will be going to Stanley Park on May 16. The Berkshire Theatre Group will be performing for us on Friday, May 17. We will have a concert in the park at Norris on May 21. Students will perform musical compilations for parents beginning at 9:30 AM. It will be held outside. Grade two will be going to Old Servage Village on May 29. Grade three will be going to Arcadia Wildlife Center on February 1st. Mrs. Jen Goodrich has volunteered to take care of our old broken garden beds outside the preschool area. She ordered new beds, put them together along with our head custodian Tom Lavelle. And thank you to the PTO for funding this project. Big thank you to Mrs. Haskins, our grade one teacher who makes the fun of Norris so beautiful each year, with the blooms in the garden out front. Beautiful flower garden. And then Southampton Junior Troop 65706, fifth graders at Norris, worked on the magic for Maddie garden that they created last year, and it's looking spectacular. Thank you. And thank you to troop leaders Jen Johnson and Katie Chilton. There's a beautiful picture in color online if you look at it. And I know they're putting up a sign as well. The sign just wasn't there when I took the pictures.
That's so nice.
Yeah, it's really nice. It's not too much. It's just really, really nice. Our enrollment stayed the same from last month to this month. It's on the second page.
Any questions for the principal? Hearing none. Superintendent's report?
Okay, I'm reading Dr. Bonner's report. So, so much. We had a great grand school award. We were all for the district in general. April 24th was invited to bring teachers who have received the Excellence in Teaching Award, which were Shelby and Morris from West Hampton, Lori Carey from Newingham, and then Casey Mearney was from the high school. She was one of the new teacher awards. So, they honor our county in our counties, and they are looking for teachers at all stages of their career. Since it's steps over 2,000 educators have been recognized, and these winners demonstrate excellence in and out of class, so we can go the extra mile. Those winners were chosen based on staff input. So, the principals got together, we reviewed our people who were nominated, and the principals made a decision together based on some of the feedback that we got. So, these were the three specific teachers that were chosen this year. Nobody from Norris this year, but we try to make sure that everybody gets a reward when we can. So, the collaborative for educational services will not be continuing as our meeting agency for the Title III Consortium for '25. They've cut ties to all of the people who are part of the consortium because it's so hard for them to spend the money at this point. So, we are going to have to do it on our own. But specifically, they want to use that funds to directly hire tutors, plan and run programs for staff and families, as well as continue to coordinate regular meetings. Unfortunately, this isn't just feasible. It's been challenging for districts to utilize the funds, giving relatively small amount of money allocated. I think we get about $1700 a year. So, right now, we're putting to participate on our own, but we will reevaluate as it comes time for the grant to see if someone can strategically use that money before that time comes. But the collaborative has dropped tide in everybody in that because it's just becoming too much of a hardship. So, we're going to continue to look at that. Again, we applied for it for next year. We'll see what we get, and we'll see how we proceed from that point. But the money for what they want you to do is for $700 is not a lot to spend on tutoring for the year for students. So, it becomes difficult. We just started working on a pre-K audit and I thank the principals. Ms. Vuda and her staff was great. It was a little bit of confusion when we thought it started. In the focus groups, we were picking one person from each group, like a preschool teacher, kindergarten teacher, very professional, but they wanted to ask all preschool teachers, all kindergarten teachers, so had to revalue. So, I want to thank the principals and the staff for the patience when we read into the schedule. So, they interviewed a lot of the pre-K staff, principals, and individual teachers to see how things are working at all of the elementary schools, including Norris. And then we're just waiting to get a report from our DEI, our advisors for the intervention. So, they'd like to interview those folks as well. So, we're looking to get a date for those people. And then once that happens, we'll disseminate a report. So, it will help us guide our preschool programs to make them more robust and work. Maybe leave them alone, depending on what happens with the report. Central office update. It's been a busy month. We've been interviewing a lot of business administrators and assistant district managers. We've had 35 people apply for both positions. Really, ZipRecruiter was very helpful once we joined forces with ZipRecruiter and instead of schools bringing in some other alternative venues to search for people. It's really been helpful. So, a joint school meeting will be held on May 20 to approve the business administrator and nurse leader, stipends. We have signed down a company under Pam Thor's leadership to mentor our newly hired payroll benefits specialists. And I think it's I-A-E-E, so it's a human resource company who really joined forces with us to help us strategically work with our HR director. So, we've also reached out to Maswell to find a major part of our new business administrator. So, they've been very helpful to guys that. But sadly, Cam and Amika will not be the regional treasurer for Hampshire Regional and Newingham for FY '25. So, right now, we're going to be searching for a new treasurer for the regionals. And that's all I have on the superintendent's report. I think I can answer any questions. Be happy on this. You can still have other questions.
Questions?
So, the joint meeting on May 20, is that in person or is that Zoom?
I don't think I can answer that. I don't know.
Don't need that.
It's going to be Zoom.
See, I'm sorry. I couldn't answer it, but...
Chair's report. John's not here. He did not send me anything. Hampshire Regional School Committee met on Monday. Busy, busy meeting. I think the biggest and best news out of that is that the contract for the HRAE teachers, ESPs, was ratified unanimously. It was a tremendous amount of work. Both Margaret and Cam, a furious time. Margaret brought it home. Cam at one point was on the team. And I'd like to reiterate again my thanks to them for the incredible work they did, the amount of time, energy, and effort spent on that to get us to a really, I think, excellent resolution. I think one of the biggest highlights in that being a four weeks of paid parental leave, which we would be the, Hampshire Regional would be the first school in Western Mass to do it, and I think one of the first in the entire state to adopt a paid parental leave policy. On top of that, approved multiple field trips, which made me very jealous and want to go on, including trips through France and Spain, as exchange students for a couple of weeks for next year. And I think that's a highlight.
Yeah, we also approved wage increases for our cafeteria staff. You know, it's getting harder to attract people. And so, we were really happy to do that for the management staff as well as for people, our dishwashers and food servers, et cetera.
Questions? PTO?
We haven't.
Excuse me, Dylan. What's your name? The contract, H-R-A?
E-A. It's the Ontario Regional Nurse Association.
Got it.
You guys meet next Tuesday?
Yeah, we meet next week. So, we haven't met until since the last one.
Okay. School council?
Our last meeting, we ran over the budget and just talked a lot about how budgets work and how town funding works. And it was a really good meeting. Anything you want to add to that, Eliza? What else did we do?
No, and I actually, I might have updated everybody at the last meeting. I don't think you were here last time. Is that possible?
I wasn't here for the last.
Yeah, so I had told everyone that you did a great job updating everybody on the budget. And our next meeting is May 28. That's a Tuesday after the morning. Yep.
CEO, something?
There's been no meetings since the last time we met. Their next meeting is May 29.
Excuse me?
Their next meeting is May 29.
Thank you.
Select board update?
Can I answer a question going back to the report and what you know about this? Why is Jesse requiring this of CES, which limits their ability to provide services to the schools?
Only for the Title III grant.
Okay.
It's not for everything else. It's just for that particular funding revenue.
Do we know the emphasis is on that?
I have no idea. We just received something from the director, Todd Gass, earlier in the week. So, we had to actually go back into our grant portal management and say, we don't belong to that consortium, and redo all those. So, but we don't know. I think if they're just, where regulations they put in place to support that, if you specifically put those specific items. I mean, in the past, we'd use it for our EYON students and such, but I think specifically, they gave specific regulations. I don't have an answer. It's something I can certainly have.
Is this affecting the after-school programs with the collaborative?
I'll ask like a gentleman, if he didn't get a chance to talk.
Because I haven't been informed as on anything about this.
Yeah, we just got an email earlier in the week. And I think the only reason we got it earlier in the week is because everybody had to put in your intent to participate in those grants by May 7. So, I think we wanted to get that information out so that we could get that in and redo it if it shows to. And then I think we're probably going to have more discussion later on. So, I think everybody at some point is, when you apply for these grants, you have to say, do you want to belong to a consortium or do you want to do it on your own? So, we're going to do it on our own. Whether we do or not is one thing that at least we'll be able to analyze when we have to in the future.
So, I think the connection between Norris and the collaborative with the after-school programs and the professional development?
That will impact that. This is specifically used for Title III funding. It's just for that particular small amount of money. So, the other things won't impact that. We use them for personal development. We use them for other things as well. Do you all use Title III for after-schooling? I don't think so.
No.
Anything else? I see the placeholders for online item transfers to close up fiscal year '23 and adjust fiscal year '24. I don't have any information on that. I don't see Mickey here. I don't think, I think that's just a placeholder. Though it would be nice to close up fiscal year '23. New business. Review the medication policy first read.
I guess I just have one question. Where we haven't seen any budget items or done anything, like how does, where does our role? How is it happening? How is the budget being?
Has it been what?
Monitored?
So, monitored if we're not presented a budget and haven't been approving any line?
That is, I don't know.
Great question.
So, I did meet with Mickey Buehl and Abby.
Schormann or some.
Schreman? This week or last week? I can't remember. And we just discussed some of the things that I have spent and things I've been spending, and they have looked at the budget, and they're trying to clean some things up. And I know that they're also trying to figure out the grants, but no real updates at this time.
And so, we've been with them pretty frequently, but a lot of it is we're still working through this. We don't want to present it until we have it, you know? It's just continuing. Apparently, we keep getting, it's peeling the onion and finding more things every time they do something. So, it's very frustrating. And I know that, I think people are working really hard to get where it needs to be, and I have confidence that we'll get there, but I agree with you. I don't know how we're supposed to know what's happening without the information.
I'll tell you that I have not been overspending.
Okay, great.
Been very frugal.
And I think that's the key. I think the principals have really been doing a good job keeping track of their own budgets, and I think that's really been helpful. And I think that's across all schools. The good thing is, unlike a lot of other districts, the principals are in charge of their budgets. So, that makes it a lot different. So, they're able to keep track of it on their own. So, that's, you know, I was a principal, I've never known the president.
Right, that could be the silver lining going forward too, is how familiar our principals have become.
Correct. Particularly our new principals with the budget process and their own budgets. And so, hopefully, that will continue going forward. I mean, our seasoned principals always have, but we do have new ones.
Yeah, and I think going forward, we already had this conversation with some of the people we've been interviewing. It has been, or maybe you need to sit down with the school committees presenting reports. Those things are reasonable. We need to do that, you know?
Yep.
At least for, at least if you're more frequent, we'll first guess there for sure.
It used to be every meeting. Like, every meeting would approve review.
That's what I was doing as well.
Okay, next. Sorry, I just.
Good questions. Review the medication policy first read should be in your packet. This is under policy J-L-C-D.
I can tell you that this has been brought forward to the nurses and they, right now, there's been, it's been reviewed and formatted and approved by the new nurse leader that they're looking to move forward with. So...
Did all of the nurses have input?
I'm sorry, has it been approved by the nurse leader or?
Well, she's not the nurse leader yet, so, but she has looked at it and thought it looked appropriate.
Okay.
No. Was this done with the, I think DPH put the checklist out?
Yes, yes.
And so, this was developed with the checklist?
The DPH checklist, right. And it says, you know...
So, this follows that, the 101 CMR2?
This is not the same office. It's on a website. Each district has a policy. This is across your five district cover.
Yep. So, then on page six, I see under self-administration, and it looks like there's like one sentence that's highlighted. So, is that something that we added? It's sort of hard to tell, but it looks like something was highlighted here.
Yeah, it does.
About the only medications that may be self-administered or prescribed?
Yes, it says right here what they specifically are.
Okay.
F and F rate inhaler, enzyme supplements, insulin delivery systems. Yeah, that's what that is.
All right.
Students would ask on my thread, you know, to self-administer prescription, those things I just mentioned, may possess administered. So, that's part of it. Correct.
So, can I ask you just a quick question about that? That stuck out to me too.
About what?
About that part, self-administration?
Yep.
Does that need to be limited by school? Because we're not doing that at Norris.
That need to be what?
Limited to the high school or certain ages?
That's a good question. I don't know. And that could be a question. It's only a first read.
Yes, no, I know.
So, it's not like that is why we ask questions at the first read, because that really stuck out to me that...
Well, do you want a first read or want a round? Yeah.
In order for self-administration to happen, usually a parent or family has to go to their PCP, primary care provider, physician, nurse practitioner, and then get the form completed for which medications they're on. And in the medication, then the provider writes whether or not the patient can self-administer.
Oh, yeah. No, I understand that. I'm just wondering if we need to make it clear for anyone reading this that this is specific to students who are capable of doing that.
I think it's outlined up there in like letters A through J.
Yeah, I'm looking. You know.
If you look at E.
I'm pretty sure, but this is a district policy, and so I just don't want there to be confusion. That's all.
So, what do you want me to find out?
I think it does spell say it there. Like, I feel like it's pretty clear.
Okay. Because there are some elementary school students who are old enough and capable of doing this, right? And I mean, ultimately, it would be the nurse who can decide if it's appropriate, right? If the doctor says it's okay, I think it's still the, I think it's still the medical professional in the building that has the authority.
That's right. The first line that says that the prescriber has to authorize.
Right.
Then either draw any question out.
Well, you can please ask. Ask any question you want.
Thanks.
No, they're good questions to ask.
I mean, I think hopefully, if the physician says it's okay, it would kind of think it would assure the student to, you know, hopefully.
Well, yeah, because there are students at the high school who are not capable of doing this. All right, so this is a first read. So, if we put this on the June agenda, we should be able to approve it and have it in place for the start of the coming school year.
Absolutely, yeah. If we can do it in June, we can write, if you have any questions, maybe you can just email Deanna?
Yep.
And then you can put the name.
It looks very thorough, and I very much appreciate that.
So, we'll accept that as our first read of policy J-L-C-D, medication administration. Appointing Dr. Mulner as a district physician.
He's coming back.
So, do we?
So, every school committee has to approve him, right?
I don't think you have to be every year.
Well, he is. It was a one-year contract. Okay. So, I mean, we can approve it if we didn't have to.
Sure, you can approve it. I don't think it would hurt. I don't know. If it's on the list, you must be able to, you must have to. I don't.
So, I'm going to approve Dr. Mulner as a district physician for another contract, the length of which to be determined? Or is it always a year?
That's my question. Yeah, I think it's just a yearly contract.
Okay, so, for? Second?
So, there's a motion made by Margaret, seconded by Julianne, to approve, appoint Dr. Mulner as continuing as district physician for a year. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Sentions? Motion carries. Review nurse leader updated job description. Now, before we get into that, it should be on the last page.
It's the very last page.
Very last page. The question is, is this appropriate for us to be taking up at this point? Or is because this is being discussed at the ADC meeting on May 16, that it should come from ADC back down to the committees? Or do we want to review it and then send our representatives to the ADC with our feedback for that committee meeting?
Whatever you would like. I will be at the May 16 meeting as one of your ADC reps. So, if you have things you want to share that you'd like me to communicate, I can do that. And if you don't, I'll just communicate my own thoughts.
Let's just review it and see if we have questions.
I felt I was looking at the wrong packet. Sorry. I was looking at the wrong packet. I'm sorry. It do happen.
Is there anything you want to address on this before we begin to review it? So, I guess my first question is, is... Number one, I can you mention this previously. Is a district nurse leader always going to be the nurse at the New Hingham Regional Elementary School? And if not, it's probably not appropriate to put that into a job description period.
Right. No, that doesn't belong, I, my personal opinion is that doesn't belong there at all because that's combining two separate jobs. There's the full-time nurse at New Hingham, and then there's a stipend position.
I would agree.
That, you know.
So, I can leave the second one there. If you want to take off from there, please do. Which is, is this expected that this work is to be done outside the hours of the full-time nurse position? And so, when and how much is the stipend for this position?
I, my memory of what we had in the central office budget was $5,000. I believe that's true.
This is, this is a lot. This is a lot for someone to do after hours, because there will be things that have to be coordinated during work hours. There just has to be. And so, I am concerned about that workload added on to a full-time workload.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly, my hope would be that what we would, what we would be getting from this position would be compliance with state regulations. 105 CMR210, to be precise, which is what our medication policy was based on apart. I think what I would like to see from this physician is getting a medication manager in place so that we can then apply to the state medication delegation, which we haven't had all year, and so that we can get our controlled substances regulations. And doing that kind of work by separate districts, to me, is more in line with what we're offering as a stipend. This seems like way too much to me for that kind of money.
This seems like the role that our previous full-time nurse lead was doing.
And we have not, the committees have not eliminated the full-time nurse lead position. We didn't fund it this year. But we have not voted to eliminate the position, which, and the only way to eliminate the position is for five committees to go on that. And I have not given a hope that we will at some point be in a position where we can have that full-time position again. And so, I don't want to be making decisions now that could impact us being able to do that later. So, that's another concern that I have.
In particular, the coordinate and implement daily nurse staffing plans, including coordination of blah blah. That the daily nurse staffing plans would have to be done during school hours or immediately before. And so, yeah, I'm just concerned about this workload and how.
Attend to all regional and state nurse leader conferences?
Yes.
So, it's all? So, this is pretty.
Right, this is essentially the job description that our previous.
For a merciful level of point out. It's not like a crack-toe, MTE-type position where if you have a nurse that's working 80% clinical and then 20% of their job is this, this seems like this is a, maybe someone could do it 50, like, but it's probably at least a point five.
That'd be, I think, et cetera.
So, I think this is too much. And I think, you know, if we can, my, my hope would be that we would get through this next year of being in compliance with everything we have to be in compliance with, and a stipend position could help us do that. But moving forward. But moving forward, the state had had a nurse leader model that they were promoting in school districts, and they, there were all kinds of grants for, there were reasons that the state wanted us to have, that more formal, full-time, or closer to full-time position. So I, I just, I would rather limit what this, what we're doing this year and work toward getting the full job and running again in the fall.
I think I'd like to see someone vote out too, like how many hours in a week you think someone would dedicate to each of these things, and how many hours does that come up to?
Right.
And it's not $5,000 type of.
No. So, so that, that's pretty much what I intend to say at ADC. I mean, if, if, if this was, if somebody said to me, you have to vote on this job description, I would vote no.
Do you have a left for ADC with?
Yeah, and if anybody, you know, if you have anybody who can now and then.
Are you not getting objections from people here?
Yeah. I don't think you. Are you, are you objecting to the stop process? No?
Okay.
I think, I, I think just, just to finish up the comment from my perspective at least, is, is this purely to be a stopgap in order to get that delegation done and that administration handled? Or is this meant to be a permanent solution? And if it's the latter, we need to put more thought into it. If it's the former, I think I understand it completely. But again, this does not as written say that.
I mean, we could pull a few bullets out of here, make that the job. If, if it's the stopgap.
That's what I think is, I can't attest that. I don't think this is a long-term. I think this is a stopgap until next year, till we can reevaluate what it looks like. But I, I can't attest to that. But to me, there's a lot of work here, and I do know, you know, um, I, I don't know, but I think so that we can proceed next year to have that in place.
And I think it's also important for us to recognize that these are things that have not been done over the last year and, and will not happen over the next year. And so we are, as a district, putting ourselves at risk by not participating fully in the activities we should be.
Great.
Jim has a question.
I have a question. Of course. I'm just, when you're saying, so this wouldn't start, this position would be for all of next year, like '24, '25, and then by '25, '26, you're saying that?
I'm hoping that in our next budget cycle, we'll be starting working on that, that we will restore the funding.
Full-time, whatever.
Yes. I think that's the hope. I do. I think that's hope. But we can, we can bear for that before the AGC.
Even for eight or, again, I mean, it just needs.
I'm just trying to get timelines, right?
Yes, yes. Because it also is a training component for the nurses. You do that.
Sign mentors.
There's a lot.
And we have people who've been mentoring out of the goodness of their hearts. They're not even paid.
Right.
And I'm not really sure that's fair either.
Right.
So. You want to do that thing with your other? That you're here to do?
We got a couple of things on our other now. First other. I hear our, I don't know, preschool, I think they're charging us state at some point.
So, um, grade five teacher, Sunday Burke, would like to coordinate a field trip for grade five students to go to Five Wits in Albany, New York on June 13th.
To go there?
Five Wits, it's called.
Wits, like handles.
Five Wits, W I T S.
Got it.
Yep. In Albany, New York on June 13th. And it'll be funded by the parents and the PTO. The cost is $2,200 for buses and $2,001,40 for admission. They will be doing team building, cooperation, and critical thinking, and they need your approval to leave the state.
What is Five Wits?
It's like a, um, skate film.
Oh, really? But hold on.
They've gone the last six years.
Like a bigger picture.
The fifth grade has gone the last six years.
Oh, true, if I can go.
Are you smarter than the fifth grade?
Are you sometimes one of the created?
Not just, not fifth grade.
No.
I'm happy we approved this amazing field trip.
Awesome.
Second.
Motion by Margaret to approve, seconded by Kim. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries unanimously. Other, 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 other. With the election coming up next week, where there's going to be some changeover, we have our, our next meeting will be our reorganization meeting. However, as for his multiple potential meetings, the Hampshire Regional School Committee coming up between this meeting, the election, and our next meeting.
When is the election again?
May 21st.
Okay. So we have a meeting May 20?
20, that's correct. And the regularly scheduled Hampshire Regional Meeting is the June 6th. I have no intention of carrying on as the Hampshire Regional School Representative after the next election, but I am running for my Doris seat. However, appropriation of that, I would seek to rather resign as the Hampshire Regional Representative effective immediately.
Hold on a minute. Well, no, 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 just hear me out. I don't know if you can, well, you could, you could renate effective meeting, but if we're going to try to appoint anybody else to it, right now, the only other two people, because Julianne's going to be gone too. Both of us are currently elected members of Hampshire Regional.
No prohibition has that here, no prohibition.
You can, you can hold, no, 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 but I meant, I'm saying like, could it be effective like May 22nd? That's my thing. I don't know if you can be the appointed person from the school committee and an elected person at the same time.
So my concern about that is that we have all kinds of government's documents.
Oh, I completely understand.
To be addressed, and I would like to volunteer for those. And as someone who is no longer on that school committee as of May 21st and in an elected position. Right. I would not be a candidate to participate on those subcommittees. And so it would be important, I think, based on my knowledge with Desi, that I be on that committee.
I 100% agree with you. My only question was, I just didn't know if you could hold an elected position and appointed position on that committee at the same time. That's my question.
My understanding is you can. I have not confirmed that, but my understanding is that you can, um, serve in those roles.
Well, doesn't John kind of do that? He's our appointed liaison to the select board, but he's also an elected.
There's a voting, there's a voting position on this committee. So the question is, is can you hold both votes?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the regional meeting. I don't, I, I just.
I do not believe that it is silent on that particular.
If I, I have absolutely no problem doing any of this, as long as it's just like, I mean, does that mean she gets two votes when she goes there? And she counts in the quorum twice?
Great question.
So, again.
But I think that we can, given the timing, I think we could probably still.
Well, the bigger question comes at May 20th meeting. I am not available on May 20th for that meeting. So if the 30th.
I'm going to be there.
You're going to be there, you'll be there. Are you able to be there on May 20th?
May 20th?
May 20th.
I think it's 6:00.
I don't think so. No.
So as long as John's there.
John's there. So I, given that concern, I'm willing to say I will resign effective for May 22nd.
But then I won't be able to say at that meeting that I am the representative from Norris and I will be continuing on Hampshire Regional. And as such, I would like to be part of the subcommittee working on the Hampshire Regional governing documents.
On the May 20th meeting you're concerned, is that?
Yeah. Well, because we're, we're, John wants to entertain that on the 16th, actually.
All right. Well, I mean, I, I mean, I guess we can, can do it, and then if we find out, if we find out differently that we couldn't do it, we need, we need, yeah.
I think we can. I think I looked at this briefly.
Hello?
And I, I, there's not, there's no prohibition on it, is my understanding.
Okay.
That there's no prohibition to it. It does not say you can, but it does not say you cannot, that the appointed member cannot, does not say it cannot also mean there's separate elected positions and I'm not aware of anything. So I think those are, I would resign effective immediately.
Okay.
And I would accept the nomination at this time for you representing the Hampshire Regional School Committee from Norris.
I nominate Margaret Larson to represent Southampton School Committee onto the Hampshire Regional School Committee.
It's kind of, you don't want to do it. Absolutely not.
So we have a motion, uh, by Kim, seconded by Julianne. Discussion.
I think we did that.
Sorry. Thank you.
Well, we will miss you at the Regional.
I, I appreciate that.
Voice of reason, and also you make me laugh, and so.
Thank you. Thank you. We can reevaluate in a year, I guess.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
And the motion was to.
Appoint Margaret Larson as the Southampton School Committee Representative to the Hampshire Regional School Committee.
Got it. And since we're talking about terms, now this is Julianne's last official meeting, and I just want to thank you for all the time and everything you put in here and how fantastic you worked with, particularly during the pandemic.
Thank you.
Your knowledge and just your openness has just been wonderful for, for this committee and for the district as a whole. So I very much appreciate that.
Thank you. Yes, it's mixed feelings that I go, but I did, this was a lot of work. It was a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of hard work. But the pandemic made it definitely very spicy and interesting and heated, long meetings.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it was worth it, I think. It's great work with everyone.
It's been working with you. Thanks, Julianne.
Yes, thank you.
We can do their evenings now.
More. Yeah, more work. Yeah, my, my full-time job. Couple, I have additional roles that I have there, so.
Ongoing business.
Yes.
Security upgrades.
We've made a little bit of movement on the security upgrade. We are going with a company in town, I cannot remember the name, Securities Integration Systems.
Yeah.
Who's done other work for us so that we know that everything is compatible. Uh, we're giving them a deposit soon, and they'll be able to start the work in a few weeks.
Computer system?
No, security upgrades. Cameras.
That's the company?
Alarm system. Um, security integration system.
Thank you.
Any questions? Preschool van update.
So I feel like it's a little bit of a ping pong ball going back and forth, but I did get an email from the Newtown Administrator, Scott, and he wants me to touch base, wanted me to touch base with Marcot Board. I'm not sure why. We were told at one point that we couldn't get the van from Marcot, but I spoke to someone down at Marcot yesterday, and they're going to send someone up to review the Hampshire van that we have now and the van that we took off-road to see exactly what we need and for they are on state bid list, so they would be able to get us a van. Hopefully we can move quickly, because it's been since November.
Hampshire Board wants her van back.
And Lauren needs her van back. So.
Will you need it in summer, Julianne?
That's to be determined.
Usually for summer.
Usually I was wondering.
Any other ongoing business that needs to come before the committee? We're.
So John's the problem.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Kim, seconded by Margaret. Discussion all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 6:44 PM.